We're going to call to order the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education's regular meeting agenda on March 7th, 2022 at 6:30 PM in the Mount Pleasant High School cafeteria. This is a meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education. It's a meeting conducted in the public but is not a meeting of the public. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed in the previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. As a courtesy, please have on your cell phones and see if you have a plan.
I declare the evening to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The indigenous people of Mount Pleasant Public School is honored to acknowledge the indigenous people whose traditional land we are gathering on today. To recognize the indigenous people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation and a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time memorial and is land on which the Saginaw Chippewa Indian tribe have resided and have continued to reside over centuries. It feels, we feel it is important to understand the long standing history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history.
Sheila Murphy.
Here.
Jessica Driven.
Here.
I'm Tangle.
You.
Danny Cocke.
I'm here too.
Amy Khan.
I'm here.
Tim O'Gorman. Here.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Is there anything anybody said they'd like to change or add to it at this point? Not seeing any, then we move into the super counter room.
Good evening, everyone. The first item under my report this evening is our annual report from Grand Rapids Building Services. So I'll introduce you Heather Bannenberg from GRBS. Have them thank you for being with us this evening and I will pull up your little report.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing us to present. Again, my name is Heather Bannenberg and I'm the Director of Learning and Communications with GRBS, which is a custodial services here in the district. First thing we have for you this evening, and just an update on the market. So right now in Isabella County, there is an unemployment rate of 5.5% and the US average is 6%. Where we're at right now is you can see locally, the average custodial wage is $11.89. When you compare that to the current average wages in the area, GRBS right now is at 12.86 as an average hard custodial wages, which is right in the you know where everybody else is. You can see distribution locations are about $14 an hour. Fast food is $12.56 on average, so we've pushed the wages up about a dollar an hour. Obviously, other industries are pushing their wages up as well, so that's something that we're continuing to monitor and look at as a point of how we retain employees and hire at the same time. As you can see over here, where it talks about continues to, wages continue to rise in all industries. Prices for goods and services are also increasing as well, which I'm sure many people are experiencing that themselves. The next slide on here kind of talks about what we're doing for hiring and onboarding. So on average, we are 90% staff in the school district. So some of the things that we are doing with our hiring and onboarding, basically speed is key. The faster we can get people in, the quicker that they can get started and they are more likely to stay and retain in their position. Some of the things that we have in here, we use Indeed, which gives you math applications and notifications. We use a program called TextRecruit, which you are able to with a touch of a button, quickly contact with somebody who has applied for the job. We also use a program called PTS. So what that does is that tracks where we're headed as far, who's been, who's been reached out to, where are we at with the hiring process, onboarding, have they done screening, was pending. Somebody's constantly looking at that on a daily basis and monitoring that as well. We do phone interviews, so FaceTime. We are using Zoom, everything possible, so we're not trying to go wait till we see somebody in person and schedule them. You can schedule an interview anytime of the day or night. Remote orientation, those can be done again over Zoom, FaceTime, anything like that. What our applicants do is they can do all of our preliminary paperwork. They're screening, they take care of everything ahead of time and then what they do is we just do orientation online. Target time for an application orientation is less than 72 hours. So we really are pushing for that very quick turnaround time. The challenge that we are having is printing delays. We are working on a solution that we are hopefully in the process of becoming our whole printing capability within our company, which then will obviously speed that up for us. Next slide on there talks about some of the things that we have going on internally to our employees. So we have an employee portal for communication and training that all of our employees have access to. What this does is just continual development for them. So we have different inventory for motivation. There's training videos on there. They're able to get their payroll stuff. They can find out how much PTO time that they have available. They can request that time off, gives them updates on events, different fun things that we have going on. They are able to see if there's promotions within the company that they would like to apply for. One of the newer things that we have coming up is QR code training on site. So that's our next slide. So one of the things that we have created is a QR code based system for our employees. So in each of the buildings is a QR code for our staff to use. What they do is they come in, they can scan that QR code and they are able to get basically anything that they need. SDRs are on there, equipment and supply reporting, training videos, our employee newsletters are on there for that. There's ways for them to communicate with their managers. They can report different things that are down. The biggest thing that we have created is when the manager comes in and does their building inspection, it creates a to-do list for our employees. Our employees then are automatically seeing what that to-do list is when they're coming in. Once they're doing it, they're able to check it off to say it's completed. They're not closing it out with the manager, still the one closing it out verifying that it has been done with pictures. What this does for them is it gives them, they access for the tools that what they need at their fingertips. They're not having to wait to reach out to somebody and get the information. They just go in, scan the QR code, anything that they need is right there at their fingertips. So this is a new program that we have worked with, it's a company called Capital Not, that we are very excited that we have implemented in the school district. What this is, is each building has its own QR code that is tied to that specific building. Each teacher and staff member has been given a card that has that QR code right there on it. What they do is at any point in time, they can scan that QR code. It's not through lawyer, an app, an email, anything like that. You just go in, scan it. Those four little faces will come up and they can select one of them. If they can give wow's to our employees, if they come in and something was really great, an employee went above and beyond, they can just hit that green button and then it will protect them from it. They can just type in any message that they would like to celebrate. On the left side, it tracks what's missed. If something happened at the same time, they can hit one of those stat faces and limits that same information. Those stat faces give an automatic, real-time notification to the manager so that the manager can make sure that that is addressed in a timely manner so that we're following up and the staff knows that they are deep heard when something does get missed and we're to compare it in a timely manner. One of the things that our company has done as well is done a DEI training with Desha Price from the University of Michigan. What this did for us is it was with our leadership team, our executive team and our Board of Directors. So what we did, obviously we put it here as our goal is to be sure that all staff feels invited to be a part of the team. They're included in all opportunities to grow and thrive and then they're recognized for how important they are to our success. So we're really trying to make that as a standard practice for our company across the board. And then our leadership recognition, so we always do our leadership banquet in the fall for the previous year. So this past year, Chris Orfheim, he's maintained and his position is the District Supervisor. He was nominated for the Capital Movement Team Member Award. What that is, you can see on there, is a supervisor that takes the time to invest in their staff and takes care of their team, resulting in higher retention. So Chris was nominated for this position because of the relationships that he has built with his staff in keeping those and retaining those employees that we have in the district. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. What is your retention rate like?
So right now, things have actually been a little bit better. I don't have the exact percentage. But what we're running into right now is it's a matter of getting, if we have no problem getting people, it's the retaining them because at any point in time, as you can see, there's probably other jobs that are available. So that's one of the things that we're doing. And building in that QR code system really has helped people because we've, we've gone through this on employee surveys to say, what do you like? What do you need? What does that look like for you? So we're taking their input and going, what do we do? And a lot of it is they feel that they don't have communication. So what this tool does is give them communication to their manager. They can communicate if their supply needs, they can communicate, you know, equipment needs. They have communication for everything. Training videos are easily accessed as well.
Thank you. I was just looking at, and I know that.
Can you move the mic closer to you?
Sure. And Ted? I was just looking at their pay rate. It just seems, I mean, my heart breaks for people that, that work so hard and yet there's such little compensation.
So some of the compensation that we do as well is, so as staff receive wow bonuses, we give them recognition in our employee newsletter. We also give them after three wow's, they get an email to go to our GRBS online store and they get to pick out some nice swag items for us. We've also learned that some kinds of people, it's not about the dollar that they make. It's, it's different recognition. So that's some of the things that we are in version, especially with like the wow's because we do put that out there for our staff. They'd like to see their name recognized company-wide versus just they got this piece of paper. We do have a lot of good bonus opportunities for them as well. So we try to put work in there, different ways for them to earn bonuses, earn other kinds of recognition as well.
Thank you.
Other questions for Heather?
I thought you were recognizing, all the years that you've been here, you've often looked at technologies to support make yourself better. It's nice to see that you're putting it into the administrative end of things, not just the vacuums and all those tools that you guys have that are crazy, but also putting it into ways to make their time efficient and effective and turnaround time be very quick. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Next caller, excuse me, next caller report is at PSC Monthly Update with Linda.
Good evening, everyone. PSC is so busy. DK5 Social Studies Plan is to present to the board by May 2nd. They have a little bit more work to do and are working on making sure that A Shobby Manual was placed within that pacing guide. Six 12 is also wrapping up and they are also reviewing the A Shobby Manual to make sure that they can add that diversity component to their pacing guides. The Art Department will present to PSC, I believe, on April 14th. We have surveyed the DK5 Math Department. Due to our curriculum not being updated, it's at its end of life and so the publisher is not even adding more additions to any of the technology that goes with their DK5 math. So we are, we will likely activate an elementary DK5 math test course yet this spring. K-12 English and English Arts is also under consideration for test course work. The elementary will likely not dive into this as they will focus on math. However, six through 12 will likely examine their curriculum and we also want to use this time this summer to work on the common pacing guide that we've been working on. So at our next PSC date in April, we hope to finalize the pacing guide template that we'd like all future test courses to use so that we have that consistency. And we are probably going to meet twice in April coming up. It's been a little bit of a struggle to find, to hold our meeting dates thanks to these snow days. And Tim has joined us on the PSC test course and once we get our dates set, hopefully he can join us and be a part of that discussion.
Um, yeah. I had requested that we have something put on the agenda and regarding the concerns that a lot of parents have, have been bringing up about specifically ELA curriculum, especially the sixth through 12. So she asked me to address it this time. Now I have had some parents send me some questions. I don't feel it's fair of me to just throw questions at you that I didn't give you beforehand, but I'm going to give you a list of some of the questions that they have that I would like to see put on the agenda and answered. But I also personally have, um, my issue is we seem to have taken ELA and turned it more into something other than what English should be at a junior high, high school level. As a business owner and I've talked to several other people who are business owners, and I will tell you that resumes that we have gotten or even work that we've asked, even from college kids, high school kids, is appalling. I can tell you I might get 10 resumes and it's been obvious that people, A, don't spell check. They don't have basic grammar. They don't have good paragraph writing. These are all skills that should be taught first before we move into the social justice, the activism, that kind of thing. Most of the parents are concerned with what's being brought in to, it's more of a social activism being brought into our English classes when our kids haven't even got the basics. Okay? And why can't we bring a more diverse opinion into it when I've looked at some of the things that they've given me? It seems to be pretty one-sided. So if you're going to teach, you know, this side of the coin, you need to also present the other side because that presents critical thinking skills, which is again, one of the things that we need to be doing in our schools. It's not just teaching them, this is what we think, but this is how do we think? How do we get different perspectives and how do we blend those? But first and foremost, we need to teach these kids how to communicate, how to do basic things. Again, like I said, just seeing resumes, it's appalling at, at a college level, much less high school level. So I think it's more important that we bring those skills up and I think we can do it in a much better, less controversial way and still get our job done to educate these children. If you want to have another course on social justice, then that's a whole different thing. Now, to give you some of the questions that were given to me to ask.
Sheila, can I ask you a question? Do you think it would be appropriate to give those questions through Linda to the task force that's starting this work since they're the ones that are actually in the classroom and have them provide the answers?
Yes, but I also think it should be brought to the public that these are the questions. And I'll just briefly, I mean, and I will give this to her. I intended to, but it was this afternoon and it wasn't going to give you enough time. But just to give you some basic ideas, lack of diversity of thought, predominantly Black Americans is oppressed, no books about triumphs and accomplishments and values and ethics. Again, diversity in the book list is appropriate for school teachers to promote and propagate their political affiliations. And just, you know, where, where are the teachers getting the books that they're choosing and who's approving them? And I will send this to you, but those are the kind of topics that, that the parents are interested in. Again, my thing is are we teaching them what they need to be successful out in the world first and foremost? That's educators. And can we do it in a less controversial way? So again, I would like to put that on the agenda so that we get more discussion on it out in the open. And I think it's great that ELA is in it, so it's a perfect time to address this.
Thank you, Sheila. Is anyone else, any questions for Linda? Keep moving on under my report and let me just change this. I have just a very, very brief COVID update for you this evening. Just to kind of continue where we've been at the last several meetings, you know, our case numbers are very, very low. Last week, thanks to your quick work on Sunday, we were able to transition to optional masking last week, which I believe went quite well. And we are still following our updated protocols, which I'll go over those in just a minute. This chart here shows our active student cases and staff cases from last Friday. And you'll note, we're really thrilled that we have zero, well, on Friday, we had zero staff cases of COVID. So really the low numbers, things are going very well. Again, you know, we looked at that 1% or more of a building population, so I'll continue to report that. But of the four cases listed there, three of the four are able to end isolation and return to school tomorrow. Today was already a regularly scheduled day off, so really happy with where our numbers are and where they continue to be countywide and from the Health Department, that they're seeing the same thing. You know, numbers are just really plummeting. And again, just to kind of remind you all of our COVID protocols, we started at the end of January. We're doing a five-day isolation or quarantine for all positive cases. Individuals who test positive are isolated for at least five days from the start of signs their symptoms. The day that the symptoms occur is day zero and we go from there. Our COVID team has worked with every case to make sure that they have their timeline so that they know when they can return. We are, that second, in order to return after five days, the positive person must have their symptoms and proving. They must have no fever for at least 24 hours without fever-reducing medication. And then we do require that they wear a mask for the next five days after they return from that isolation. So for the 10-day period with the mask. In general, our COVID team is still doing a great job of addressing all of our student and staff cases. I know there's been a lot of discussion in our region about not contacting, not letting people know. We are still doing that. We are still doing the phone calls. We are still doing follow-up letters. Our perspective is that we want families to know what's happening so that they can address it however is best for them. So especially with the number of cases being so small, that's very manageable and reasonable for our team. Back in January when we had 55 cases in three days, it was a little less manageable. But with these numbers, it's definitely still manageable to do. We do still have a large supply of K and 95 masks for students or staff or anyone that wants it. We are also in my office still offering rapid tests for our employees. Although I do have a general sense that there is better availability for tests in our community. I myself see them in stores now as I'm out and about. And we're still asking just for that continued partnership that when families do have a positive case, that they root for that and they let us know so we can help them work through that process. So it's not lost on me that it's right about two years to the date and a lot in our world changed. And so I think we're on the right track. I've shared with a lot of people that I feel very hopeful about the direction in which we're moving and I want to be able to continue to do that. So do you all have any questions regarding COVID pain? Okay. And the last item on my report, I wanted to give you all an update regarding our planning for next year. As you know, we start in January, meeting with high school and middle school students to plan their schedule for the next school year. Linda spends a lot of time working with our counselors at both buildings to make sure that we have the appropriate number of sections offered. She also then spends a lot of time looking meticulously at our elementary schedule and making sure that we have the appropriate sections. As we're rolling up first grade to second grade, we have enough spaces and those kinds of things. Over the last several months, we've also very closely looked at the Balance Calendar Program. This is the, the third school year with the Balance Calendar Program. Our first year being the 2019, 2020 school year that like I just mentioned, ended rather abruptly. And unfortunately, I think for a wide variety of reasons, that program is just not growing like we had hoped it would. It's not serviced the student population that we had hoped. As you remember, we put a lot of our at-risk funding into that program to support that program. And when we look at the demographics of those students, they're not the students that are meeting the at-risk markers or that need that extra support that, that we had hoped. So at this point, moving forward for the 2022, 2023 school year, we will likely plan to not be able to offer that program again. And I want to let you all know that publicly first, Linda does have correspondence that will go out to those families and those teachers tomorrow. No teachers will lose their positions because everyone will just shift to a traditional calendar classroom. But right now, we're looking at balanced calendar classrooms that have 15 to 17, maybe 19 students in it. And our traditional calendar classrooms are sitting at 26, 29, somewhere even overloaded. So we know if we move everyone back to the same calendar, we can better distribute those students and better distribute the resources. So I think we all feel, well, I personally feel very sad about this, that the program wasn't able to grow like we had hoped it would, but we just feel like we can't continue putting more resources into that program. I could see your question, yeah.
Yeah, I know that this is early days decision that just came up, but do you have a sense, any sense, any ideas about how you're going to use that, that money?
So what we would do is we would look at again, how we can support the students that need it the most. So that means taking some of those funds and hiring extra interventionists, scheduling extra small group time and those kinds of things, those supports to meet them. We've done a lot, as you all know, behavior's been a challenge in our buildings this year. We've done a lot to bring in extra behavior support staff, so we could look at that as well. But I, we just feel like there's better uses of them.
No, I mean, that makes perfect sense if it's not meeting the needs of the population, that money was intended for them.
And I will say that I believe the parents and the families that are in that program and the teachers that are teaching in that program love the program. It's just not enough to sustain it and I think we have to look at where our greater needs are in our buildings and shift that.
Yeah, you certainly can't stand with that pool of money. That makes perfect sense.
So we want to make sure that families have word. Our first kindergarten kickoff is next Monday. So we want to make sure that, you know, families are well aware of that. And again, we all really sort of love the program. That actually came originally to us as a board initiative, if you remember all those years ago. So if it's possible that we can get through this and bring this event in the future, I think we would all be open to it, which is timing has not been good.
Jim, what were the, what was the success of the students in those programs?
Well, the, the students continued on their growth path. But the students coming into the program didn't have the learning gaps that we anticipated. So does that make sense as students?
I understand what you're saying, but I guess my thing too is, is it was successful. I mean, probably even more so because of the students that you had in there. I'm just, I hate to give up something that's successful and is it successful because of the small number of kids in the class? And maybe we should consider making our, especially our K through two, K through five, smaller class sizes if that's at all possible.
I mean, I think that's something to look at and something to consider. I don't know if we can find the teachers to make them that much smaller, but to be able to say, what could we do to provide that smaller environment? So if that is through the work of more paraprofessional support, more interventionists, so that students are getting more of that one-on-one attention, I definitely think it's something to consider.
Do you think it was that or do you think that it was the way it was set up where they had so much time and then the time off that they could use? And then how many of the kids did use the enrichment and how many didn't? I mean, I just think it's a phenomenal program that offers a lot of possibility that kind of hit at the wrong time and a lot of problems happen with it. I hate to see it, I understand, but I hate to see it go by the wayside and not, you know, look at what was the positives and how can we get more people into that program that really truly could use it.
None of you know specifics on, on their growth?
I just, I don't think you could ever, you'd have to use linear regression to really find out their growth because those students just had a different skill set coming in. So there, there would be really no way to tell if the balance calendar had an impact versus what if they were just on a traditional calendar. And I think in the future, if the community really wanted balanced calendar and we can make a whole school balanced calendar, that would, that would be amazing. I don't know if there's that kind of interest in the community. By having the school, being a school, it was, it was a little bit difficult to mesh some of those things that we tried to really work on with PLCs and. some of those things that we tried to really work on with PLCs and, you know, lots of pieces and perks that are kind of hard to explain. The teachers did an amazing job. The kids did an amazing job. The intercessions were pretty well-attended. We could sometimes run an intercession with one teacher or a substitute teacher. Some families used that for a true break. But I just don't think it did quite what we anticipated that it would do for our students and for our community.
Did you have a question to add?
Yeah, you can, you're a part of it today. But I would love if we could, I mean, it sounds like it's not sustainable to maintain at this point. Like, I wish you, I could get a big picture, you from the teachers, from the families, and about, you know, what did we learn, what worked pretty well, besides the calendar, right? We found out what it provided for families. And if it pleased that portfolio money, you know, what are some of those things that we learned through that program that we could, you know, either attempt to implement? Or at least know that that was the stuff I was looking positive from my three-year trial. But I do understand that it's going to be really hard to get to what worked precisely, because everything was compounded, right? And so.
But intended the class size was a different class size, it's just that fewer families signed up for it. So that made our other classes bigger.
And I wanted to, if we can kind of get a feel from our community about why it wasn't more widely extended? Was it purely because it was inconvenient to change schools? Or was it that relationship with a private school that was already established? And they didn't want to go to another one? What was it that made it less popular than was anticipated? Because it is a little surprising, they didn't pick up more. And so I'm hearing from the community, a lot of it seemed to be logistics, whatever, anything else. And so I wonder, you know, if we can get a feel for that, in that as a country, like, it seems like the balanced calendar is moving forward. So what was it, here locally, that didn't make the case?
Yeah, I definitely think that would be good information to have, especially if it is something that we feel like even the segments of our community are so interested in, because I'm going to continue to look at it in the future, so.
Yeah, I really like the idea of sort of exit interview with the families who did take advantage of the program. Just what, who leaves that, what they do like about this work.
And the more they have, the better, right? And even if it's going to be subjective, it's going to be really hard to, we won't be able to have any position of any sort, but at least get as much information as we can and let it go out to gather to the rest of you.
You know, and I was going to bring this up later in our conversation. But something that I would like for us to look at in the future is, we looked at, and I love the balanced calendar, I think, Tim, you and I spoke about it years ago. I think it's a great thing. And who are our neediest kids right now? Jennifer, you brought up earlier that we're seeing greater behavior issues. So we're spending money on more behaviors. And if we looked at a true alternative school, where the monies that were put into the balanced calendar, I would, if you would indulge me in just some conversations in the future about that possibility, how we, what is offered right now? I know that there are several different things being offered. And I know as those programs go through, we will have a better idea of what's effective and what is not. But I would like to start with, what are we offering right now? And how do we get the supports to the neediest of our needing? And we all know that smaller class size is something that is beneficial to all kids, but in particular for those who really need an anchor, a one-on-one. And you can't really, at the kinds of relationships that you need to have with kids if you've got 30 kids in your classroom. So that's a conversation that we'd like just to start having.
I'd also be interested in the people, if you could send out in the Friday poll or something, why they didn't choose this? Maybe that's a really good question. Why didn't they choose this? You know, was it logistics? Was it, you know, what was the reasoning behind them opting out of the balanced calendar? If there would some way, I think that would be really interesting information. And that would actually tell us better where we should go. Should we try it again somewhere down in the line? Or should we just completely scrap it and try something else? But that would be just as interesting.
I agree. I agree. Any other comments? Thank you. And that's all for our report this evening.
Next, acknowledgement of your correspondence. And we did receive a correspondence from Andrea. That's the citizens' request for a justice board, not on the agenda or non-agenda items. As usual, I have the sign and sheet here, and we'll call you up. And you have three minutes. Tim, we'll let you know when your three minutes are complete. Starting with three volunteers.
Thank you. There's actually quite a few things that I want to touch on tonight. And one of the things that I want to touch on, first of all, is the fact that we have a special meeting that was in regards to COVID. And I do see that that was on the calendar. But I also see there were two more special meetings that were scheduled for the 15th and the 16th of February, that were also not on the calendar. So with that said, I request that if there are special meetings, because there are clearly a lot of people that do participate in the school board meetings, that feels that it would be functional if possibly a test or an email could be sent out if meetings were added, or meetings were changed or canceled to the school board. With that, one of the things that I've spoken with recently, and I thought, well, Jennifer, earlier, in regards to some issues, I have come to find that there is no staff code of conduct in this school. So just to say that again, there is no staff code of conduct. If I go to the policies and the procedures, I can look up lots and lots of code of conduct for athletes, for students, for anything that has to do with the students in the building. But again, there is no staff code of conduct. And that recently has become very alarming to me with some recent issues that have taken place. And without saying what those issues are specifically, I know that you're all aware of what I'm speaking of. It's very concerning. And not only is it concerning to know that there are no code of conduct policies for staff, but the policies that govern students are much different than the policies that govern staff. So for instance, staff gets a removal warning, a written warning. They get suspended, they'll pay. They get suspended with that pay, and then we can go beyond that to see if they need to be fired. Now, on the other hand, on the flip side, and as a principal, I'm going to speak to you, because you know that if something happens, boom, you're out. You can do a spy and see, and there's no question about it, students are out. I don't think that that's acceptable. I don't think it's acceptable that things happen with staff in the building, and those things are not bound in the files. Linda, I want to say that to you, because I know this refers to you. That when I pull up a staff file and things are not in it, that's very concerning and very alarming. Because when a new principal comes in, they don't know what I'm talking about. I think I'm crazy. Y'all might think I'm crazy, but I'm not. First things that are missing from files. With all of this, I know that we brought up also the PSC committee. I fully believe that there needs to be parents on that committee. And I know we're having a parent committee, but it's not the same as having parents that legally, with state law, have the right to determine what's going into the curriculum. So I do ask again, that all of you consider adding parents on that committee. So it's four of our four of our parents. The last thing that I want to say is that there is a national organization called Moms for Liberty. And I'm very, very elated and excited to announce that I will be the chapter chair for Moms for Liberty. That's a national organization. So with that said, I actually have something that I'd like to hand out. Because we are able to endorse the handout that could be running for school board. I don't know that all of you would be interested, but I do have one for Sheila. And if anybody has any questions, or you'd like to know about that, you're more welcome to ask me. Thank you.
Next is Eugene Ha.
Thank you. My name is Eugene Ha. I'm currently junior. And one thing that needs to be addressed in our high school is our bathroom. I recently figured out that some of our school bathrooms are still closed due to the threatening that happened in our high school. It's been about five months since some bathrooms are closed, and many students have classes that are very far away from each other. And some students cannot even go to bathroom if some bathrooms are closed. Sure, students could ask teachers to go bathroom during class time, but it would ultimately result on students burying class as the loss of time accumulates. And like, they have to make up the time. So I suggest that for all students' sake, we should all open up the bathrooms, since the classes are not going to happen anymore. It's very unlikely. And it's going to be for every student, so thank you.
Carol Slobodsky-Gold?
Okay, Carol Slobodsky-Gold from Lincoln Township, Mount Pleasant School District. I've been reviewing the district assessment scores and asking why Mount Pleasant, with all the resources and community support, has scores in the less than 50% proficiency range? And this is why I'm here. I had a conversation with a student teacher that worked in Mount Pleasant Elementary School pre-pandemic, and the current problems she says are not due to COVID, because she was there prior to COVID. She said there were students in the fifth grade that could not read. Students are being pushed ahead. Discipline problems limit teacher effectiveness and students' ability to learn. Students interrupted the entire class and sometimes school when you could hear outbursts, back going in the halls. She said it was unbelievable. In general, oral problems are among the teachers, and that the teacher's lounge was full of negative conversation. She would never work in the district. And she, what she witnessed was only a five-minute daily oral language was the only ELA question given. The rest of these comments, I just mixed them all up, are from teachers, staff, parents, and students. I just kind of did some pulling among people that I know. And these are the things that they said. District-wide, there's a very large problem with a lack of discipline for behavior problems. And I think you're all aware of that, as you mentioned already earlier. The teachers spend valuable class time on behavior problems. There's no accountability by administrators. Teachers are discouraged from making waves, no support from administration. Disciplinary laws and student files, information is never shared with the teachers, so they're in the dark, and they only know what's going on when they're told by their students. These disciplinary laws will have 30 to 50 infractions for some students. Why are they still in school? They need help. They need accountability. Teachers, staff, and students do not feel safe. The middle school is a hostile environment. Students are disrespectful to teachers and staff with profanity, sexual comments, and even threatening to the teachers. This is tolerated by the administration and excused because the students are quote-unquote "having a bad day." A student called the environment chaotic. Discipline problems at the high school and middle school are worse than the inner-city schools this teacher was at early in their career. Parents who voiced concerns, student administrators are not responded to. Students lack skills to form a proper sentence, spell, or use vocabulary. Basic math skills are missing. A parent shared that he moved his son to Sacred Heart, where discipline is under control. Infractions are handled in writing with a statement on the school code being violated, followed by the required disciplinary action for the violation. This information is given to the student, parents/guardians, teachers, and coaches of that student. Rules and consequences are very clear, and they are followed with accountability. Remembering what the student teacher said, discipline problems limit teacher effectiveness and students' ability to learn. Now, here's a stretch, but this is what my question is, personally.
Three minutes, if you have any comments.
Thank you. If profanity is red in ELA, does it make a statement that we can use the same language with teachers and administrators? Is a precedent being set? I encourage you to go to the schools and speak to the building administrators, teachers, and support staff to see what they are facing every day. Talk to parents and students about what they experienced, and then take action to gain control of the learning environment in each of schools. Thank you.
Next is John Keating.
Good evening, all. Three years ago, my granddaughter Lily was assaulted at the middle school. And she had a lot of care for you. She literally loves you. And after our meeting, I was walking out of the building with the liaison police officer, who's a friend. And I said, "Tim, I would gladly come to this school every day and walk the halls if I thought for more men it would make a difference." But then, what would happen if I could turn to the student who was doing something inappropriate? This police officer said this to me. "I have students who tell me to F off every day." A police officer? We know that's going on in our school is rampant. We have a code of conduct that says, "The aim of this code of conduct is to foster an environment that is safe and conducive to learning." Within our school, the administration and all other school personnel are responsible for creating and supporting such an environment. To achieve this goal, faculty, staff, parents, students, and other members of the community, that would be me, must have a clear understanding of, quote, "the school's expectations for students' behavior." I'm asking you, what is your expectation? How are we going to achieve this? It says right there, "Specify the rights and responsibilities of students. Describe the conduct that violates those rights and responsibilities. Standardize the procedures the school will use in responding to conduct violations." We all know this old saying, "Rules without enforced consequences are merely suggestions." I beg you. I beg you. We need to change the atmosphere and what's going on in our schools. It's not fair to those teachers. I taught in the inner-city of Detroit for five years, at Northwestern High School, Cass High School, and the kids at High School. I never had the kids tell me to F off, ever. And I taught for 13 years. I've never had a student say that to me. It's unpassionable, and it's unacceptable.
Next, Jessica Lab.
Hello, I'm Jessica Lab. I'm a Union Township resident and parent of a high school senior. First, I'd like to thank the board then for their work with teachers and the staff to deal with the real hardships over the last two years, the COVID pandemic. We appreciate the work put into those plans. Secondly, I'd like to thank several teachers specifically for challenging my student and providing excellent learning opportunities for him. These teachers are Lexi McPain, English teacher, Erin Beckman, Social Studies, and Natalie Kaiten Band. I asked my son today if he thought it would be better if teachers did teach topics or books that made him uncomfortable, or challenged him to examine his beliefs. He responded, "Sure, if the school wants, we could be ignorant of the world." Please continue to support teachers and their freedom to teach their subject areas. Recently, the College Board, which manages the AP courses and under-standardized tests such as the SAT, published a statement noting that schools that censor teachers in AP classrooms will lose the AP status and not be able to offer those courses or give other students to earn this education, and potentially college prep. Please review that statement, as it emphasizes the need for developing critical thinking as a key educational goal. Not critical thinking, looking at two sides to every issue, because that's not critical thinking. Censorship prevents open critical thought, and it must be avoided in the Mount Pleasant schools. We need that unflinching presentation of history, of literature, of the world, so our students are prepared to think critically, evaluate effectively, and expect evidence before drawing conclusions. Thank you.
Phil Hertzler, father of a high school senior here. I'd just like to voice my support for the continued teaching of the uncomfortable history of race in this country, in public schools. As an example of this, I'd like to read a selection from The Color of Law, a forgotten history of how our government segregated in America by Richard Kroposky. "When from 2014 to 2016, riots in places like Ferguson, Baltimore, Milwaukee, or Charlotte captured our attention. Most of us thought we knew how these segregated neighborhoods were crying violence, anger, and poverty came to be. We said they are de facto segregated, that they result from private practices, not from law or government policy. De facto segregation, we told ourselves, has various causes. When African-Americans moved into a neighborhood like Ferguson, a few racially prejudiced..." a few racially prejudiced white families decided to leave. Then as the number of black families grew, the neighborhood deteriorated and white flight fell. Real estate agents steered whites away from black neighborhoods and blacks away from white ones, thanks to discriminated with redlining, refusing to give mortgages to African-Americans who were extracting unusually severe terms from them, the subprime loans. African-Americans generally haven't gotten the education that would enable them to earn sufficient incomes to live with white sufferers. And as a result, many remain concentrated in the African neighborhoods. Besides, black families prefer to live with one another. All this has some truth, but it remains a small part of the truth, submerged by far more important one. Until the last quarter of the twentieth century, racially explicit policies of federal, state, and local governments defined where whites and African-Americans should live. Today's residential segregation in the North, South, Midwest, and West is not the unintended consequence of individual choices and of otherwise well-meaning law or regulation, but of unhidden public policy that explicitly segregated every metropolitan area in the United States. The policy was so systematic and forceful that its effects endure to the present time. Without our government's purposeful imposition of racial segregation, the other causes, private prejudice, white flight, real estate steering, bankrupt line, income deficits, and self-segregation, still would have existed, but with far less opportunity for expression. Segregation by intentional government actions is not de facto. Rather, it is what the courts call the jury, segregation by law and public policy.
Next is Lauren Yeh.
Good evening. I am Lauren Yeh. And I am a professor at San Francisco University. I'm also a resident of Mount Pleasant. Thank you again this evening for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. And good evening, Happy New Year, since this is the first time I'm seeing you. I want to speak briefly about honesty in education and in our teaching. This means that as educators, we must create space in our curriculum for the stories and histories of all groups. We must represent those histories honestly and accurately, even if they make us uncomfortable. Sheila Murphy talks about non-controversial subjects or non-controversial teaching. I don't know how that's possible. I assume that that would include not talking about topics such as race, sexual orientation, gender identity, the history of slavery, whatever that means. You're going to have to define it, but I'm not fit. All human history is controversial. Just breathing is controversial. Our students must be prepared to address typical subjects. It helps them develop critical thinking skills and how to present and argument. These skills help them prepare for the real world in which they'll find themselves eventually. I hope that the board will consider the need to hear diverse perspectives, controversial or not, as it creates the DEI task force. And I do thank you for the difficult work that you continue to do and for your commitment to education. Good evening.
Next is Malam Rali.
I just wanted to, I didn't put my name on the list. And then I heard Jen say. It's not overbooked by me. That's not the word to use. But this is kind of a two-year anniversary of sorts. I'll never forget the feeling of, I'm not wearing a mask. I'm not going to wear a mask. I don't think we need to that years ago. And my daughter, very quickly, being a mascot actor, came home and said, why do you not wear a mask? And we did. Glad we did. Really glad we did. And now we're kind of at that like, I don't know if we need our mask anymore. I'm showing up in my elementary school where I work. And on that very first day, my masks were no longer needed. I wore my mask. I'm glad that I did because many of the students in the classrooms that I attended to teach my fullness lessons said, who's she up there in nerves today? I said, oh, come on, honey. Because lots of the kids aren't wearing masks anymore. I feel like I'm on the same. And I said, I understand. I've got a mask too. I'm keeping it close. And I'm not knowing if I should wear it or not wear it. So kind of like whether we wear the mask and some kids are uncomfortable with wearing it or whether we're not wearing them and some kids are uncomfortable with not wearing them. We are all together. We all have our nervous systems agitated by everything that's going on. And I hope that I can layer in the idea that this is not a either-or situation. It's really both and. Totally heard your words, Sheila, the candidates not coming in with their writing quite prepared. I see two people that want to mentor under me. And they come and their papers are their master's degrees and counseling programs. And they want to mentor with me. And I see their paper looks not as great as I would like it to be. But that's not because we teach about LGBTQ and racism. That's not because of that. It's both and. We can teach those things and we must teach those things. And continue to work with the fact that we've got trauma coming out of our ears, left, right, and center. And if I had anything to say about it, I'd say it has something to do with four hundred years of being founded on this land of Tual Island, not ours, not mine, as part of the colonizing history of trauma. And now it's coming in bigger ways. And as a mental health practitioner, I hope to be on the front line of not using punishment for behaviors that are problematic, using compassion, love, and understanding and curiosity. Why do the kids get behavior problems? Why? Because poverty, because capitalism, because greed. I want to, I can't make a difference. Thank you.
Next, we move to the consent agenda. First off, the approval of the minute for the February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two structural meeting.
So.
Favor of the staff.
Aye.
Any opposed? On access, next is new business. First, starting with resignations.
Yes, the director board to accept the resignation of Allison Young.
So. Favor of the staff.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. And the access.
And our new hires plural. We have Alexis Bear. She's currently an intern in our district. And we're hoping to hire her the minute she graduates. So she is officially joining us fall twenty-twenty-two. We have Mr. Aaron Kipmiller. He's here tonight in the front row. He's joining us as the drafting instructor at the GI Tech Center. Welcome to Aaron. And Emma Russell, Emma is over here. She's joining us. She's student taught at Fancher. And then she moved to the high school to student teach. And we're going to work with her on early release. And she's going to join us in about a week, I think. Is that right, Emma? Officially at the Mountain Middle School. And then Winay kind of wants. We are excited that Winay is going to join us as our new project aware school social worker counselor. Winay has worked in the district in the past as a Native American ethnic though, quite a few years ago. And we're really excited that she will join our team at the new board.
Is there any motion? So. Second, then, favor of the staff.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, yes, welcome to the district. Welcome.
Thank you for coming.
And then last but not least, we have our retirement to honor. Beth Mabre has been with the district. I should have looked up the exact amount of years, but close to thirty years, I believe. And she's been just an amazing team player on lots of our teams with our artistic students. And she is retiring from her position as speech pathologist. So we wish her well, but we really don't want to miss her role in Mount Pleasant Public Schools.
A move with much regret and much excitement for her.
Second. Favor of the staff.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
No.
Unfortunately, we want to go to her next one. And we wish her well when her retire. Thank you. That brings us to the Board of Education discussion. This is the opportunity for any board member to discuss issues or concerns that they may have with the board.
I just want to ask, we always have people come up and we're not allowed to address them as board members. And I understand. But at what point, how do we have those conversations that they bring up? Like parents on the PSC or the teacher staff code of conduct or the bathrooms? How do we bring that here and address those issues? And so that they know that we're hearing them and they know, you know, that it's just not going on down here.
We can ask to have items added to the agenda, correct?
Okay, but what I'm saying is, you know, should I do that now? Or, you know, I think, you know, I'd like to hear the story on the bathrooms then in the following one. I think the teacher staff code of conduct is an interesting. I'd like to have update on that. And parents on the PSC committee, I also like an update on that as well.
Sheila, thanks for bringing that up. I think that's about a frustration of mine since I got on board. But when is it that we get to talk and hash through things? We can't have too many of us together because it creates a war, which is, we're not allowed to do that. But thank you for bringing up. When is it appropriate for us as a group to really discuss this in a safe and.
Yeah, I think we need to have information brought and given to us so it can be discussed.
Well, I think.
And then informed.
I just want everyone to be clear. When Sheila, when you say that we can't talk and we're not allowed, you are grown adults and you are certainly allowed to do whatever you want to do. But I think that the idea that when Amy reads at the very beginning of our meeting that this is a meeting in the public, sending of the public, there is information that we hear every night through our public comment that is new information that we need to be able to take away and research and get additional information out. So the structure of this meeting is really set up so that we are not engaging in a back and forth when we have all the answers.
And I understand.
So but I just don't want you to feel like.
I know, but I think, I guess that's been happening. I'm like you. It's just like, okay, I'm here to say, I'd like to see some of this start getting put on the agenda and start discussing things. Especially those three, I thought were interesting.
And you can respond and say whatever you want to say.
And I mean, I'd like to just underscore that we have this time right now.
Always.
And obviously, as you just said, we're not going to be able to respond to everything we hear. I mean, we want to be thoughtful rather than reactive. But we can ask to see, you know, what we want to see. We can ask for information from you, from Linda.